Thank you so much. The October 16th, 2023 meeting of the Seattle Park District Board will come to order. It is 5:33 PM. I'm Andrew Lewis, President of the Board. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Board Member Herbold.
Here.
Board Member Juarez.
Here.
Board Member Morales.
Present.
Board Member Mesquita. Board Member Nelson.
Present.
Board Member Peterson.
Present.
Board Member Sawat. Board Member Strauss. Board President Lewis.
Present.
Six present.
And Councilmember Strauss has been excused from, or Board Member Strauss, rather, has been excused from today's meeting. And we will announce additional board members as they join the meeting. If there is no objection, the agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the agenda is adopted. Approval of the minutes. If there is no objection, the minutes of the June 26th, 2023 Seattle Park District meeting are approved. Hearing no objection, the minutes are approved. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the minutes? Moving on to our agenda today, just as a brief overview, we are going to have a presentation from our Parks panel, who is online and ready to go. We will then have a public hearing following the presentation. So, members of the viewing public who are here for the hearing, note that that will be item two on our agenda, public hearing. And once the Parks presentation is finished and questions have been answered, we will proceed to that public hearing portion of our agenda. At that point, we will adjourn, so I don't expect this to be a long meeting this evening. But we definitely intend to get down into the details with our partners from Parks. So with that, will the clerk please read item one into the record?
Agenda item one, the Seattle Park District proposed 2024 budget for briefing and discussion.
And we are joined by our Superintendent AP Diaz and Michelle Finnegan from Parks and Recreation. We also have our Tracy, our own Tracy Ratcliffe from Council Central Staff online to assist with the presentation. So why don't we go ahead and allow Parks to do their presentation? And then I am happy to open it up to board members for questions. And we will then proceed to the public hearing to hear from members of the public. So with that, I will hand it over to you, Superintendent Diaz. Thank you for being here with us this evening.
Thank you so much, Board President Lewis, and good evening, Board members. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening, and I'm pleased to be joined by Deputy Superintendent Michelle Finnegan. So tonight, we are going to review and discuss with you Mayor Harold's released proposal for the 2023-2024 mid-biennial budget that was released on Tuesday, September 26th, as well as the adjustments, which includes how the city plans to utilize Seattle Park District resources to invest in creating self, self, sorry, creating safe, healthy, and thriving communities for 2024, something that I know we are all committed to. Tonight, we will provide an overview of how the proposed 2024 budget aligns to the Seattle Park District's six-year cycle plan, which you all adopted around this time of year, I believe, last year. And we'll point out a couple of technical changes. We will then provide a quick overview of how Cycle Two ramp-up is going. However, we will be providing more additional updates at the November meeting. So for this evening, I'm going to be passing over the presentation, the majority of the presentation, to Deputy Superintendent Finnegan to provide an overview of the proposed 2024 Park District budget and to specifically highlight a one-time technical change to the interlocal agreement related to the general fund and park district funding. She will then walk you through a summary of the Park District budget legislation, which is the subject of tonight's public hearing and for your November 21st upcoming board meeting. And then we will also provide any additional updates to our six-year district cycle plan and providing additional information again that will be coming. So with that, I will turn it over to, and I wanted to also thank Tracy Ratcliffe for her assistance, as always, from Council Central Staff. And with that, I'll turn it over to Michelle.
Thanks, AP. Good evening, Board members. Thanks for your time tonight. Just gonna work on my technology here real quick. So as you know, the City Budget Office is working to transition our city budget processes to be more in line with biennial budgeting, which means more of a technical review during the mid-biennium year, which we are in. That messaging, along with CBO continuing to highlight some potential issues with general fund uncertainty as we come out of the pandemic, means we have a pretty simple mid-biennial budget to walk through with you today, especially as you just adopted the six-year plan last fall. So we really wanted to align with the direction you provided to us then. I will, however, walk you through a few technical changes, including the one that AP mentioned a minute ago about the interlocal agreement. But before we get into that, just to set a little bit of context, this is SPR's proposed 2024 budget with all of our funds referenced. Though we're highlighting the MPD in yellow here, you can see that our total operating capital budget for 2024 is proposed is still a little over $320 million across all funds, with the general fund and the MPD making up about 75% of that total budget. Moving to the blue pie chart on the top right is showing our operating budget, which is about $228 million or 70% of that total. About 30% of our operating budget is supported by the Park District, along with general fund at a little over half, and the park fund at about 18%. That's where our earned revenues go to support a like amount of expenses. The green table at the bottom is our proposed capital budget, which is about $93 million, supported mostly by the Park District and REIT. You'll also see that for next year, the waterfront has quite an investment, and that's due to the timing of the project and construction. It has a big investment as we plan to open it in 2025. And as you know, those funds are managed by the Office of the Waterfront. I just want to highlight, again, related to the waterfront, is that this won't exactly match the six-year plan numbers you'll see in a couple of minutes, and that's just because, as you know, the Seattle Center now does operations for the waterfront. And so that's not shown here, which is just a SPR view of 2024 proposed. So as AP mentioned, our proposed budget for 2024 does assume a one-time change to the interlocal agreement. The interlocal agreement between the city and the Park District includes a section to make sure the city continues strong general fund support of the Parks and Recreation System. Specifically, it maintains a minimum required level of general fund support. We, at least in the Parks Department, call the general fund "floor." It was established when the Park District started and has escalated every year by the annual growth of CPI. Under the proposed budget, instead of the floor inflating by the same rate as the CPI for 2024 only, it would inflate by 3%. In 2025, it would revert back to increasing by the CPI, using the new 2024 number as the base. And this change was proposed to bring the MPD more in line with the inflation rates of other levies across the city to ensure that our floor is sustainable, as the city plans for a difficult financial situation ahead. Sorry, Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you, Michelle. Just to jump in here, because I think this is one of the concepts we want to spend a lot of time with as a board, to really understand this and really be able to explain it to our constituents. You mentioned, and Tracy, you should jump in on this too, to provide some clarification, that the city is undergoing similar adjustments, given the uniquely high inflation that we're experiencing right now in some of our other levies. If there could be a little more context as to specifically how other funding sources that are similarly situated to the MPD are being adjusted to reflect this, that would be helpful for the board to have that context. The second thing I just want to say really briefly is Board Member Mesquita has joined the meeting, so I want the record to reflect that. But with that, Michelle, I'll hand it over to you to respond to that. And then Tracy, if there's anything you want to add afterwards, it'd be good to hear from you as well.
So not being an expert on all the other city levies, my understanding is those levies do set just a flat inflation rate rather than tying it to CPI. So example, SDOT's levy sets a 3% general fund growth amount. And so what we're proposing here, as part of the mayor's proposal, is to match that kind of standard across the city. Otherwise, as you know, it's been a bit of a crazy year inflationary-wise, and so our, the CPI would be inflating by 7.5% without that one-time adjustment. And interestingly, the general fund is beyond the proposed floor anyway in this particular case. So it is just setting kind of a new base for future inflation adjustments to be built upon. Tracy or AP, do you want to add anything to that?
I think that's right. I think you said the calculation at 3%, but actually, the budget reflects a 4.6% increase in general fund. Again, this is $2 million more than the 2024 endorsed. And as I understand it, that, we're not done yet with the general fund contribution. When, so the general fund, the Parks budget, Parks District budget contribute when labor negotiations are completed and COLAs are completed. And so there is the expectation that there will be more general fund that will be allocated to Parks once those labor contracts are completed and they figure out what percentage of the general fund budget needs to help cover those full increases. So we're 4.6 right now, gonna be higher once those labor negotiations are completed.
Thank you for those clarifications, and it's good to identify that this early in our issue identification process. I mean, we're not here to make any like hard and fast decision this evening. But in terms of really digging into this to make sure that we're maintaining our fidelity to having the Metropolitan Park District be an additive resource and that making sure that that component of the interlocal agreement is adhered to is an important policy direction for this board and for the council. And just making sure that this policy is consistent with that, which it sounds like it is from the representations we're making in this presentation, is something that's important context for us. So thank you.
Yes, and thank you, Tracy, for that added item. Okay, this is a super, oh, sorry, Councilmember Nelson.
Yes, Councilmember Nelson.
Sorry, are we going to return to that issue later on and get into more detail, or should I ask a question now?
You can ask a question now. I think that would be appropriate.
Well, last year, I spoke of my concern about shifting the burden of a charter departmental responsibility to the, to property owners, because that raises the cost of housing. And I was concerned that the same thing that happened to the libraries would happen to parks. And over time, the amount, the percentage of operating fund for libraries paid by the general fund has decreased in relation to the levy dollars. And so this did catch my attention, and it says 3%, but Tracy says 4.6%. And so can you please repeat, Tracy, what you meant by, you know, why there is that difference between what is written down and what will eventually be the case?
I'm happy to take a shot at that. Michelle, you can, you can correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is that they chose the 3% because they wanted it to mirror what other levies had done in terms of a calculation, most particular transportation levy. So they chose that 3% because that's what these other levies had done. And for this one-time event, they wanted to use that as kind of the benchmark.
Okay, but we're not, we're not re-upping the, we're not taking action on the transportation levy. So it's consistent with all the others, but you said that it actually will go up to 4.6 once labor negotiations are complete?
No, it's at 4.6 right now, Councilmember, and it's going to go higher once the labor negotiations are complete, as I understand it. And the general fund will make further contributions to the Department of Parks and Rec.
And I think what we're trying to articulate, sorry, Councilmember, is that the floor that future years would be compared to is being established with a 3% inflation. We are, the way the mayor's proposed budget is currently set, and the AWI on top of that will even be beyond. But the actual floor would inflate by 3%. So future floor escalations, where you put CPI on them, would be based on this new baselined floor. We can, we can send some kind of charts to you afterwards if you wanted to see kind of where the floor is based versus actuals, I guess, is what we're trying to articulate, not very well.
But we're artificially changing the floor to be 3%. And so future budgets are going to be based on a lower amount, so.
Yes. Would be compared to a lower amount. They aren't necessarily going to be a lower amount, but they would be compared to a lower amount.
Yeah, we're changing the baseline forever. Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna add this in, because I think it's relevant in terms of context. The city, the general fund, has contributed to the Department of Parks and Rec over the life of the Park District, on average, more than what was required in terms of that general fund requirement. So I think it's fair to say that the general fund has kept up with its side of the bargain. Not every year, we've had, you know, a couple of years during the pandemic was one, and this is another, where they didn't do CPI adjustments. But for the other years, I'm pretty confident that we have exceeded what was required in terms of that general fund contribution. So just to add that as context for you, and I think that's kind of Michelle's comment about the floor, but that isn't necessarily in future where we will end up. What the floor requires and what the general fund ends up contributing, of course, depends on the availability of general fund and where we sit in terms of our revenue picture, so.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I just voted for something last year based on a set of assumptions, so that those assumptions are changing. But I understand the reasoning. Thank you.
That's a great question. Thank you. Okay, so this crazy picture is trying to walk through a couple of technical changes. I do want to point out at the very top of the slide, both the 2024 proposed and the 2024 revised assume a same level of property taxes. So we're not changing the overall property tax. We're just, I'm gonna walk you through about four changes related to what we call detailed lines of business, just to point out some technical adjustments that we have proposed to make. So the first item here is related to the waterfront. And we have some prior year underspend, which we would like, we are proposing to re-appropriate into the operating budget next year in order to support the Seattle Center as they take on the waterfront O and M and things continue to ramp up there. Again, it's not new money, it's re-appropriation of existing operating funds. The second item, which is highlighted in the light green, is related to the, well, actually related to the Park Ranger program. At the beginning of this year, I think Councilmember Lewis, you're on the Labor Committee, and we had made some adjustments with that committee's support to the Ranger pay. And in order to fund that, we have a technical adjustment in the proposed, just switching which line of business some expenses are adhering to, where some funds was moved out of grounds maintenance in order to make that pay adjustment without having to change the number of Rangers or the investment in that program. So it's, again, a technical adjustment that is not impacting service levels in any of our lines of business. The third technical adjustment I wanted to point out is related to aquatics and the community center operations, similar in a way to the Ranger program, although this one was known last year when we were doing the Park District planning. We have reclassified some cashier positions to customer service representatives. And we needed to move the funding out to the appropriate project where those staff are located. And we had put the entire placehold in the community center operations detailed line of business. So it's just moving money to the appropriate place based on position, location. And similarly, you'll see down below, there's the team programming. There's a few of those positions in that detailed line of business as well. So that's that middle green. And then the very dark green is a couple of shifts related to the Green Seattle Partnership and the Natural Resources detailed line of business. And part of this was simply a technical change, where my team mapped a project to the incorrect detailed line of business. So we're just swapping that to make it right. It's not changing anything except for a mapping error on our part. And then the second thing it's doing is moving a little bit of money across those detailed lines of business related to a proposed position that we have in the, on the city side, related to integrated pest management, which is a subject matter expert that helps us with habitat issues or pest issues. You know, that could be anything from hair and habitat, or beavers, or dealing with goose poop, or various noxious weeds or that sort of thing. So we feel like we need a subject matter expert to help us doing that in the future. So we have a technical adjustment related to that. So those, because we're now in this detailed line of business format, we wanted to be very clear when we were making some adjustments across those. And thank you, Tracy, for helping us summarize it clearly in a very busy slide. So moving on to our next slide. So as you know, we're in the midst of 2023 ramp-up. Just two weeks ago, we closed out Q3. So I wanted to give you a real quick update from a financial lens, which we do have financials through Q3. And then the next slide, we are still working with our teams to assess our programmatic ramp-up related to Q3. So we'll be back in November with more. But here, we just wanted to point out that we are making quite a bit of progress as we go through our ramp-up program on the operating side. The second bullet here, we're on track with spending, although we will have about 8% of our, at this point, we expect to propose about 8% of our operating funds carry forward to next year, and that will be a future legislative decision for you. But that is in part based on known ramp-up activities, such as ordering vehicles for maintenance teams, that they take a little bit more than a year to come in. So those actual expenses will hit next year. And some other kind of known expenses related to labor, the zoo contract, that sort of thing. And then the next thing we wanted to just point out is related to capital ramp-up and that we are making good progress on our capital ramp-up. These two charts on the right are actually looking at all funds, because most of our projects are funded by multiple funds. But you can see here, both on the projects out to bid, as well as the cumulative spend, that we are definitely ramping up as these figures are comparing full years, the last two years to three quarters of 2023. So lots of good things to report there, and we'll have more details at our November meeting. And of course, after the year concludes, as we meet next year. On the programmatic side, we just wanted to highlight a few things. We have had good progress this summer with employing youth. We actually exceeded our goal of 80 youth employed. We also were on target, on time, for expanding our community center hours, teen center hours this fall as the school year launched. We have had a lot of great work on our tree planting crew. There's actually some great visuals we'll hope to bring back to you in November that we just were briefed on. But that work, while most of the tree planting will happen in Q4, because this is the great weather to plant trees in, they've actually been doing planting work all year round, all year long, to get prepared for this moment. And people are out there all, all fall, as of now, doing that tree planting. So they're on actually the target to exceed that goal. Similarly, as you all know, because it just happened in September, we were able to get the expanded DSA agreement passed, and that includes adding Bell Street and Pioneer Park. And actually, earlier this year, actually, in the end of Q1, we were able to expand our evening and weekend park maintenance before peak season. And that is now a year-round expanded service. So we will not see the kind of traditional reduction in the winter, which we're very excited about. We also wanted to highlight a few things that are underway. We're still working with the mayor's office to align our proposed Youth Opportunity Fund and mentorship program with the mayor's vision there, and we're hoping to be able to launch that very soon. We've been doing some preparatory work with engaging youth and lots of events, but kind of that first kickoff of the opportunity fund is still pending. And you'll probably see some proposed carryforward related to that next year. I mentioned the vehicles are ordered already. We also have made great strides getting ready for the equity fund framework. It's actually been rebranded as the Parks Community Fund, and they are working with, that staff is working with the Park Board right now to establish criteria for the 2024 funding. And as you know, the 2023 was fully allocated in Resolution 51. So we feel like we're on target there. And then we have the Park Rangers. The Phase One group was fully operational on, as planned at the end of Q2. And we are now making plans for our Phase Two hiring. And finally, because we know you're all very interested in our restroom winterization efforts, we are on, on plan to get 10 of our 60 that need to be winterized, winterized in advance of this winter, so that those won't have to be closed. So I feel like we're making good progress on those. And then, Councilmember Nelson?
Board Member Nelson, do you have a question?
Yeah, could you please go back to that previous slide? I was really interested in the expanded community center hours. So has everybody been hired so that those hours are actually available for our community members? I guess I don't understand what ramp-up, does that mean we're on our way to getting full?
We actually fully implemented them in September. There are still staffing being hired, but the actual hours are currently staffed, so.
Great. And then for next summer, how are we planning for ensuring that none of the, that all the lifeguards can be there?
That's a great question, and we are doing a ton of work on that. I don't have details at this moment, but AP, I don't know if you have had recent conversations of that. If not, we can get you some updates on that and especially highlight it at our November meeting, if that would be helpful.
Yeah, I definitely would love to spend some more time with the board in November on this issue. It's something that's very much on our mind and something that we're trying to look at some alternative strategies so that we don't continually find ourselves in this. So again, I'm happy to present some of our approaches and ideas for that in November. We're still assessing a few things, and I've just returned from a national conference where unfortunately, this is a phenomenon that is affecting a lot of urban cities and still trying to figure out why, but very much something that we want to be prepared for so that we don't have the beach closure issues and lake swimming and all the other things that we love so much in Seattle. So more to come on that.
Okay, thank you.
So then our final slide before your public hearing tonight is just to walk you through the actual budget resolutions that will be talked about tonight. And then, of course, you'll take up at your November meeting. Resolution 59 is related to the waterfront carryforward item that I outlined earlier. So that's a very specific resolution carrying forward that to 2024. And then it goes into the Seattle Center's budget at that point. You'll probably notice there's a gap here. There was going to be a Resolution 60 that we were working through related to something that was happening on the third quarter supplemental side, on the city side. And we recently learned from law- And we, um, recently learned from law that that was not necessarily necessary to do on the Park District side. So we have just skipped that number. Um, Resolution sixty-one amends the ILA per the conversation we had earlier about the general fund floor. Uh, Resolution sixty-two is the standard budget resolution that, um, adopts the MPD budget by budget control level. Um, and it has an updated six-year plan attached, including those technical changes that we walk through tonight. Resolution sixty-three is the standard short property tax resolution that, um, references the increase of, of tax collection over last year, which was about three-point-four percent. And then Resolution sixty-four is the standard long property tax resolution that sets the amount to be collected, about a hundred and twenty-two million, and references the, um, that would equate to approximately a forty-one cent per thousand assessed value, um, level. And then Resolution sixty-five sets your board meeting dates for next year.
Uh, thank you, Michelle. Is that the conclusion of the presentation?
Yes.
And thank you for that summary. Um, Superintendent Diaz, do you have any, uh, final comments to add? And then Tracy, um, would like to turn it over to you if you have any additional context you want to provide in advance of board member questions.
No, thank you, Councilmember Lewis. And again, thank you, Park District Board Members. Um, we're excited about the progress that we're making and the programmatic, as well as the capital areas. I'm really excited to share that with you more in-depth than November twentieth, because that's really will be the proof of what this whole MPD is about and the objectives that you've all outlined for the city. So, um, just that we're making good progress and that these, uh, budget impacts will continue, or these budget alignments and some of the actions tonight, uh, for your consideration will help us continue on that progress. But we're very much pleased with the progress, and we hope you will be too. So, and thank you, Michelle, for that excellent presentation and our entire budget team who's listening.
Thank you so much. Um, Tracy, anything to add before we open it up to board member questions?
I really don't, because as you saw here, um, the changes to the spending plan are, uh, very minimal and really practical in nature. Um, so I really, and I had lots of conversations and made sure I understood all that was going on there. So I really don't have anything to add in terms of any issues or concerns about what, uh, is being proposed for the Park District, uh, in the two thousand and twenty-four proposed budget.
Um, great. Thank you so much. I will now open it up to board member questions if there's any follow-up. Um, are there, uh, do board members have any questions based on the presentation? All right. Hey, great, guys, seeing none. Um, and we did ask a few as we went along, so, so that tracks. Um, I think that we're, uh, we're good for this initial presentation. As I said at the beginning, um, this is just the, the start of our, um, discussions around the intersections of the Park, um, District Board, um, with our budget process. Um, and we've queued up some, uh, area identification, uh, from some of these questions. Um, aquatics, um, learning more about the inflation floor. Um, so these are good things, uh, for central staff, for parks to note, um, to be very prepared for, uh, as we go into the next hearing on this and continue through the budget process. Um, uh, and very much appreciate this overview, this initial overview and that chart summarizing the legislation that is being proposed. Um, uh, Board Member Nelson?
Was the, was the, um, increase from a tax rate of thirty-seven, uh, changed to forty-one anticipated?
It was anticipated a bit because, as you know, the AV has gone down a little bit, but it was not what we expected when we were doing the, um, the six-year plan last year. As you can see here, sorry, I didn't touch on this earlier. The planned amount we assumed was gonna be thirty-seven as we went into the six-year plan. Um, when the very smart people in the, in the revenue forecasting team helped us actually calculate the long and short property tax, they're estimating it will end up being about forty-one cents per. Um, but because of the, also the change to the median ho- home price, um, it's only about a nine-dollar estimated difference, um, annually.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. With that, uh, we will close the panel, and we will move on to our second item, which is the public hearing. Will the clerk please read item two into the record?
Uh, yes, item two is the public hearing. Currently, we have no, uh, remote or no in-person speakers. We'd still would like to open and close it officially.
Um, given that we have no speakers, uh, signed up for the public hearing, um, I will officially, uh, close the public hearing. Seeing as how there are no speakers that are signed up. Um, Madam Clerk, is that sufficient for making a record?
That works. I'm, I'm gonna use that. We opened at six-oh-eight and closed at six-oh-eight. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, and with that, uh, um, board members, we have concluded, um, today's meeting of the Park District Board. Um, thank you all for being here and look forward to following up on these topics at the next hearing.
Are we adjourned?
Uh, yeah, sorry. And we were, it is six-oh-nine, and the Metropolitan Park District Board is adjourned.
We can go now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Good seeing you, Tracy.